I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting and Order. It is Monday, December 20, 2021. The time is 9:01. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
First, we have approval of minutes for December 6, 2021 Commissioners Meeting, and also the December 10, 2021 Executive Session.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to Presentations. Mr. Barry Ritter.
Morning, Fred.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Fred.
Well, I'm happy to tell you that we're coming to the end of the journey that we started back in August as you brought me on board as the interim director of the 911 Center. We did a nationwide recruitment for a new director, and that yielded a successful candidate from the state of Minnesota. And the 911 Board interviewed a gentleman by the name of Fred Cummings a few weeks ago. That process started with an internal interview with my team and staff member from the 911 Center. We recommended to the 911 Board that an interview be conducted of Mr. Cummings. He has over 30 years of experience in public safety, many years in the 911 industry. He's a certified RPL through one of the national associations, has a longstanding in training and employee wellness. Last week, the 911 Board did meet, did interview, and voted to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that Mr. Cummings be hired as the Director of the Delaware County 911 Center. Mr. Cummings could not be here today with us, but he is attending through Zoom for Commissioners to have an opportunity to speak to. And with that, I would recommend to you as well that Mr. Cummings be considered as your next director.
Well, I was able to be in on the interview with the 911 Board. Mr. Regan, do you have any questions or anything?
I went over and talked with Barry, and he's, Mr. Cummings, I've not met you, and welcome to Delaware County. And Barry said that he's just very qualified, and he was very impressed with his resume, and I was very pleased, taking the politics out of 911's long past due.
Barry, would you like to introduce the deputy director also?
Please, thank you. Also during this reorganization at the 911 Center, we were able to create a deputy director's position for the management side to help with the employees, the training, and the operations. We were successful in attracting a candidate from outside of Delaware County. Kyle James is with us today. Kyle serves as an assistant supervisor and responsible for new employee training currently in Madison County and comes highly recommended from the leadership there, and he will be joining us in January as well. And so he's here today for you to meet, and I think he's actually going to work a little bit today in the center.
Good.
Welcome, Kyle.
We'll need a motion in a second to...
I'll make a motion we appoint Mr. Cummings as the new 911 Director.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thanks, Fred, for joining the team.
Barry, thank you for all your hard work as well. Appreciate it.
Still on mute.
Thank you.
Yep.
You've got your number there. We're going to keep on calling him.
Yeah.
So we're going to keep on calling Barry. He's been wonderful.
Next, we have the 2021 Year-End Economic Development Report. Mr. Brad Bookout?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be before you today. I know you have a long agenda, so this is a long report, but I'm going to try to get through it as speedy and expeditiously as possible. I want to start out with some opening remarks. I want to thank you all in the capacities that you work in. You're very supportive of the work that we do, and it's been a pleasure to work with you these last few years. Delaware County had an extraordinary year in 2021, likely better than any other single year in several decades for the county. Six years ago, Commissioner King and I met. He shared a direction that he'd like to see the county go in with economic development. We've worked hard now to carry that out, and the numbers are going in the right direction, which you'll see here today. I've worked with all three of you in various capacities on different projects. You've allowed me tremendous leeway to carry out the work. We have a concise system in place that's producing the good results that you're going to see here in a moment. But without your leadership, your direction, none of what I'm about to share would be possible or would be happening in the county. So with that, I'll get started. So this is the Delaware County Commissioners Staff. We work closely, of course, with all three Commissioners and also Bill Walters from the East Central Indiana Regional Planning District. To recap, 2021, many organizations ramped down during the pandemic within Delaware County. Many organizations throughout the state, like our group, ramped down their work. We did ramp up the outreach to businesses. We positioned projects so that as the pandemic eased, the projects would move forward. We had a record amount of announcements and groundbreakings, some of the largest investments in the county's history. Longtime vacant buildings, which we're all very well aware of, are under new ownership. Over $793 million in new committed investment in the county, over 138, I'm sorry, 1,038 new jobs committed. So biggest announcement, this is one of the top announcements in the state of Indiana in 2021, was the Can Pack Project. It's one of the world's largest aluminum can producers, broke ground on 862,000 square feet in September. It's a two-phase project, $490 million in total investment, 425 new jobs. I want to specifically thank Tracy Lutton and also Joe Rets. They were spearheaded the project. Tracy really spearheaded the project. Joe and I, and the County Commissioners, and the County Council were support on that project to get that across the finish line. The governor visited for the groundbreaking. It's a neat project. So this is a larger facility than what we have seen with Borg Warner's Muncie Manual Transmissions. This is a big, this is a big project. Inox completes construction of a $20 million factory, specializes in stainless steel slitting and forming, one of the largest stainless steel suppliers to the appliance industry, completed 149,000 square foot facility, estimated 100 new jobs on South Cowan Road. Really excited about this. This is steel worker jobs, so these are, these are good-paying jobs. I think the average pay here is $26 an hour. Muncie Power Products announced the purchase of the former Bravini Building. This building's been, we've been trying to market this and get someone in it for a long time. They announced a $20 million investment in the building. Muncie Power Products, if most people are familiar with them in our community, but they were established in 1935. They purchased 127,000 square feet, and they're wishing to add an additional 100,000 square feet. So they have 144 employees currently, and their hiring at that facility continues. They'll be ramping up next summer. They're currently in process of redeveloping the facility to meet their needs at this time. North Central Industries announced the acquisition of a long vacant property and a $2.5 million investment. North Central Industries is a locally-owned company headquartered in Delaware County. They're acquiring the former City Machine property on East Washington Street, hiring up to 20 new employees. You can see in the lower right-hand corner the condition of the existing building there. I mean, it's, it's really, really bad. There's a lot of vagrants and drug use on that property, and they're going to get cleaned up. So North Central Industries is a large fireworks importer in the state of Indiana. Midwest Metal, we assisted them with a $3 million equipment upgrade. Again, locally-owned company, established 1921. They are continually upgrading equipment at their facilities, and we're happy to see that continue. Approximately 145 current employees. Delaware County Council assisted with this project. Norenco announced an $88 million solar farm called the Hawthorne Solar Farm. It was a 75-megawatt project located southeast of the town of Albany. Norenco is a South Carolina-based company. There are two solar projects. Both of them are, have announced that they're proceeding. They have leased property to proceed, and we are anticipating that they will begin construction on those in the future. Exact date, I don't know when. Inventergy announced 155 million Meadow Ford Solar Farm in Delaware County. This is 163-megawatt project, 155 million investment, located in Washington Township. They are Chicago, Illinois headquartered company. The Oliver is a mixed-use development underway in downtown Yorktown. This is a project is led by the town of Yorktown. 26 Class A apartments, potential future restaurant, all-inclusive retail. Construction is by Rebar Development. Delaware County Redevelopment Commission assisted on the project. Optum Health broke ground on a new $6.8 million medical office building. This is a 25,000-square-foot facility. If you're not familiar with Optum Health, this is an extension or they acquired American Health Networks, and this is expanding medical office services in the area of Northwest Muncie. It's a new specialty medical office building, and we're, it is probably 80% complete at this time. East Terra Plastics, this is an interesting story. We worked with East Terra Plastics about three years ago, and they ended up going to another community leasing a building. Operations and things didn't work out in that community. They actually came back to Delaware County. They ended up purchasing the former Marsh Warehouse in Yorktown. The building is, was completely stripped of all of the copper. They're investing and putting all-new electrical back in the building. We're excited to see them get that building back into productive use. There's no incentives with this, this project at all. It's a plastics recycling facility, and they'll be bringing in all their machinery in 2022. Clearline Technologies advanced their plans for their $4 million investment in the former J.D. Norman Building. This is the old Hinman Dual property. That's a Canadian company, manufacturer of roofing blocks, speed bumps, parking blocks. They did receive a $200,000 grant from IDIM recently for some new machinery related to their recycling program. So they plan to invest up to $4 million and hire 10 to 20 people. The Wedding Factory, this is an exciting project. If you're from the Albany area, you know the former McCormick Building. It's been vacant for a long time. Clyde Shafer and his investors have brought the Wedding Factory, which is a wedding venue. They've invested 1.3 million in this vacant industrial site. It's over a 100-year-old building, and it's being redeveloped now. There's plans to continue to redevelop the building, and we're just happy to see that new wedding and event center being at that, at that location. The Delville Municipal Building, special thanks to Commissioner King. This project's nearing completion now. It's a joint venture with the county, the town, and the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. Will not raise taxes in the community. The project is, it will be a downtown anchor. There was a lot of blight in downtown Delville for a lot of years. That blight has been cleared and a new building built. So special thanks to Commissioner King and the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. The former city garage was repurposed to Myers Performance Engineering. This is on East Washington Street, former city garage. It's back on the tax rolls. It's unused for several decades. It will be used as a classic car display with hopes to bring a classic car culture to the downtown. The former abandoned Hilltop Hotel, this was a haven for illicit drug activity. Abandoned hotel remained unsold and multiple tax sales. Delaware County Redevelopment Commission funded the demolition. This says that the demolition's underway, but it actually was completed last week, so we're excited to know that that's cleared. We hope to issue requests for proposals for developers in 2022. This is a feel-good project, the iceberg ice cream opening in a vacant building in Albany, Indiana. Anytime that we can be supportive of local folks who are opening destination-type specialty restaurants, we want to be there and help them out. So the Thornburg mother-and-son team opened this up, and it's great food. We had a ribbon cutting and just, just a good time. Glad to see that facility in Albany. Moving along to infrastructure improvements, there were $12.5 million in sidewalks and trails completed on both the south and the north sides of Muncie. Kudos to Commissioner King. He led the efforts to get these trails completed. Over five miles of new trails and sidewalks paved in 2021. There's 11.5 total miles paved to date. Plans to extend the trails along East 23rd Street on the south side of Muncie. To date, over $12 million invested. Over 1.9 million in new road paving. This is just with TIF money. I want to give kudos to the guys at the Delaware County Highway Garage. They were great to work with our team at the county, and we utilize the funding. There's a list of roads there. I won't read them all, but if you're driving on paved roads in 2021, new paved roads is probably paid for with TIF money. TIF funding paved projects, here's, here's another list. I just keep a running tally of all the TIF-funded roads. Over 30 miles of roads paved, 64 lane miles paved. Securing grants and getting properties back on the tax rolls. This slide's dedicated to Bill Walters, as you can see. His organization is really key, does a lot of work that people don't, don't know about, but this is the catalyst to get things moving forward in a lot of cases in the county. I won't read all of the things that, all of his accomplishments, but you can see there's $1.5 million grant pending right now for a second entrance into Park One. There's a pending $500,000 EPA grant, several best grants for community business outreach that were received. He's worked on education series programs for both solar energy and broadband in the, in the county, and helps get a lot of properties back on the tax rolls. Thank you to Angie Moyer for the hard work on this particular slide. The TIF and the Creed districts funded bridge replacements of Bridge 501 and Bridge 125. This is the bridge located on Cowan Road over Buck Creek and also the bridge on Nebo Road over York Prairie Creek that is set to be in construction in 2021. So two good projects, almost $3 million in total, bridge work completed from TIF and Creed. The county refinanced bonds. You know, part of what we do is using money to do projects and, you know, to increase the tax base and create jobs and opportunities in the county, but it's also about saving the taxpayers' money. So we refinanced two bonds, estimated savings of those in excess of $800,000, and then we, we paid off one, or I'm sorry, the refis were over $500,000 in savings to the county taxpayers, and then we paid off one bond early, which was the Bravini Bond, which saved the county taxpayers $528,000. So big savings with that, and we, we hope the County Council recognizes that we're working hard, trying to make sure that taxpayers are, are supported in the county. Trends and Challenges, this is an interesting slide. This gets a lot of attention from a lot of folks in, in the industry. As we know, most local companies are growing. We're in constant communication with local business community. We have an increased focus on environmentally conscious projects. The South Industrious Center is perceived as an up-and-coming area. I personally have seen appraisals of pre-construction and post-construction in that area, and those appraisals are way up in that area. So we're excited about that. We try to establish ourselves as a trusted advisor for different business entities. We've made good contacts with multiple international companies, and most importantly, people say, you know, are you selling our community? No, we're not selling the community. We're helping prospects in, come to the community. So that's, that's really what that's about. Challenges in the community, these sometimes can be a little bit controversial, but we simply don't have enough employees to fill the available jobs in the community. Future focus will be on projects that don't involve big job creation in the county. Also, the cost of construction can exceed the value of a building. I had an experience recently in Delville where a company wanted to build, or pre-COVID, the building price was 1.9 million. Post-COVID, the building price was 2.9 million. So prices are going up to build new construction. The existing inventory of buildings is at an all-time low, and inflation, the labor market, material shortages are all expected to slow projects in 2022. Projects by the Numbers, this is probably the most important slide in the whole deck. Delaware County's net assessed value increased in 2020 to 2021, $25,983,064. This does not include figures from the city of Muncie. This is only in Delaware County. This is a six towns and unincorporated Delaware County. So that's a phenomenal number. It's outpacing our surrounding counties by a long shot. This also does not include the projects that I've discussed in this report today. Most of them will not hit, not be assessed until next year. So things are going in the right direction. New capital investment in real and personal property underway now, $793,210,000. Anticipated full-time, part-time, and construction jobs related to this investment, 1,038. So I want to thank the following people, and I am going to read these names because I, if, if not, I don't want to lose, leave anybody off, but Commissioner King, Commissioner Henry, Sherry Regan, thank you for all you do, Bill Walters and Angie Moyer, all the members of the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, Creed Board, the Commissioner's staff, Jenny, thank you for all you do. You're always available for us. All of the folks at the Highway Garage, the County Council, the Plan Commission, the GIS Office, the Auditor, the Treasurer, the Clerk, the Surveyor, you're all part of these projects in some various capacity. The Tax Abatement Committee, the Town Boards of all the six towns in the county, the Legal Council for Delaware County, John and Joe. I think I'm on the phone with Joe at least six times a day, so thank you for all your help. The Financial Advisors with Baker Tilly, the Innovation Connector that hosts us, as well as the ECI Regional Planning District, and the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. Working with Tracy Lutton is, is always a pleasure, and she's, she's very astute to help us out with whatever we need. So again, 100% of the success of the projects goes to you, the Commissioners. Your leadership and fortitude has, has kept the county on track, so I look forward to working with you again next year.
Thank you very much, Brent.
Thank you.
Happy to answer questions.
Do any of the Commissioners have anything for? Mr. Bookout?
Outstanding job.
Thanks, guys.
Great teamwork, Brad.
And since we're not focusing on any big jobs coming, now we need to help fill those 900 jobs that are out there.
Exactly right. We need people.
Workers ready.
We need people at this point. So yeah, we've come a long way in the last six years. Thanks all.
Thank you, Brent.
Next, we'll move to Contracts and Agreements for Approval. We have the 2022 General Service Agreement with Triad Associates. Angie?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an agreement I present to you annually at this time of the year. It's for the same not to exceed 50, or 15,000, I should say, and the hourly, hourly rates have not changed. It's basically the same agreement as we have now.
I make a motion we approve the agreement with Triad.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for approval. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Professional Service Agreement, GAI Consultants.
Commissioners, this is for Bridge 86 Replacement. This is a timber bridge, so I know Sherry will be happy about this one. It's located on 650 East at Campbell Creek, near De Soto, between 350 North and 400 North. The contract's not to exceed $189,630, and that includes PE right away and inspection. We anticipate construction in 2023. I do plan to apply for community crossing funds for this one, to pay for half of it, but if not, we'll still move forward to get this replaced.
I make a motion we approve the agreement with GAI.
Thank you. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Indiana-Michigan Power Street Light Service Agreement. Angie?
Rob Keisling from Indiana-Michigan Power reached out to me, and we had a couple of phone calls and virtual meetings, but they are needing your approval at no cost to the county to upgrade the existing street lights to LED.
Big savings, 95, I believe, they're working on. I move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Settlement Agreement, UAW Local 321, John?
Yes, this is a settlement agreement to resolve the issue of the, whatever grievances were existing out there from the last labor contract. The withdrawal of the grievances settlement and set forth in terms, it was a long discussion and negotiation, but I think we have this resolved and we have it signed off by the union, so just ask for the Commissioners' approval.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have Augusta Consulting Agreements for Redevelopment Commission and Economic Development. Brad?
Good morning, Commissioners. I've met with each of you individually, shared these agreements, and I've also provided them to your Legal Council for review. I'm happy to answer any questions. They're pretty standard, is what we've done in the past three years.
Commissioners, have any questions?
There's a little bit of a raise in the agreements, correct?
That is correct. We did, we did mirror the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment that the Social Security Administration goes by, so that's, that's what we've done.
You do a fantastic job, and you, it seems like I always bother you in the evening when we're not supposed to be working, but I appreciate everything you do, and, and I want to make a motion to approve both these agreements.
Brad is very thorough with his job, and I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we have the 4D Consulting Service Contract. Emily?
Good morning, Commissioners. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. I have two contracts. The first one is the Consulting Services Contract. This agreement is to a gentleman who's already doing consulting work, I think for the Auditor's Office, to get the 66.6% reimbursement. So they already kind of were doing it on their own, but they've found that there's things that they're getting more, I guess, particular about in their reporting. So they've hired this. This money will be paid for out of the incentive fund, so it's no cost to the, to the budgets. So I just need to have this signed and sent back to the state.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have the 4D Cooperative Agreement. Emily?
Yes, this is an agreement with the state for the federal financial participation for the 4D Court. This is how they get their 66.6% reimbursement. This is what we sign every single year with the state that we have to follow to show that we use all the time to hear 4D cases.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Professional Tax Service Agreement for the 2022 Delaware County Deed Sale.
Morning.
Morning.
Basically, this is an agreement, we're switching companies to the guts, assuming you approve this contract. This contract, I actually say the county, about $20,000 a year. I switched this new vendor. So we're asking for your approval.
And we're getting those down, but yet we still have some...
Right. This company's done several tax sales throughout the state. They currently do Mary County, which is their largest, and do like four different sales a year for them, so we feel they're more than capable of doing what we need.
I make a motion we approve the agreement.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Next, we have the United Consulting Agreement for Bell Road Stormwater and Shell Building Properties.
Good morning, again, Commissioners. There are two agreements I've provided to your Legal Council for review. One is for the Delaware County Regional Wastewater District to provide water and sewer service for two sites west of the Wesco Shell Building, former Shell Buildings, now occupied by Wesco. Shell Buildings, now occupied by Wesco. But this would make these properties available for future development. And then also, there's a second project, I'm sorry, that one is approximately 140,000, not to exceed the price. And then the second one is for near Albany, Indiana, to extend water and sewer utility services to do the preliminary engineering for that, approximately 164,900. So happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion we approve both the agreements.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Holiday Schedule for 2022.
This actually is an amended holiday schedule. Jenny found a, since a carryover with January 1st and all that, so just an amended schedule to make sure we're accurate.
Okay.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have Motorola Solution Service Agreement for 911 Communications.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Dunn with Delaware County 911. This is a renewal contract that we renegotiated after we closed down the old Justice Center on Washington Street, and a new price reflects approximately a $30,000 reduction. We retired a lot of equipment over there. And it's up for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheriff's Commissary Agreement with Canteen.
Good morning. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. What you have in front of you is just an extension of the contract for the company that we use in the jail for commissary services. We've used Canteen for years. They provide us a great service with virtually no defects or errors on their side. So we're just looking to extend this for three more years.
I make a motion we approve the agreement with Canteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have Ordinances for First Reading. Ordinance Number 2021-035, creating a new fund for receipt of funding from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, as authorized by the Indiana General Assembly in 2021. Morning, Zach.
Morning, Commissioners. We've been selected as a hub county for new high-tech crime unit. There's, we're going to be receiving somewhere in the area of 233,000 from the state. It was 285, but there's been significant software purchases that have been made by IPAC, kind of off the top of that. So we just need a fund created so that those funds can be placed in it. So then we can start making hiring selections and necessary purchases of equipment for the unit.
You'll need the rules suspended today, right?
Yes, and we are asking that the rules be suspended so we can go ahead and create that fund. As soon as the fund's created, we've already spoke with the council. They're going to be, I believe, setting a, sending out notice and having a special session so we can create the lines for the fund.
Okay.
I make a motion we introduce Ordinance Number 2021-035.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for introduction. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I make a motion we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Donna, can you?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I make a motion we adopt Ordinance 2021-035.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adoption. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Next, we have Ordinances for Second Reading. Ordinance Amending Title I, Chapter 4 of the Delaware County Code of Ordinances Regarding Election Districts for County Council.
As I indicated in the last meeting, these are for, as a result of the census, and some minor changes we made to the basic districts, everybody's district, council, and commissioner. So they just need to be adopted by the end of the year. The maps have, and the ordinance have been posted on the website. They're up. So.
I move we adopt.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second for adoption. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
You're adopting both of them, correct?
We're going to adopt 34 now.
Okay.
I make a motion we adopt Ordinance 2021-034.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adoption for the election districts for County Commissioner. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. We have no resolutions, so we'll go to Department Heads and elected officials. John, do you want to go ahead with the request for the proposals?
Sure. The Commissioners in the American Rescue Plan, and even before that, had talked about a mental health and rehabilitation center to be put into, at the Justice Center out there on South Pillitzam. There is a plan, part of the plan for the American Rescue Fund is to fund the build-out of that, as well as start operating the fund, or the program and the place. I have put together two requests for proposal, one for construction using the similar type of arrangement too, that we built the jail with, for sending out the contractors to do that. I've also authored and put together for the Commissioners the Substance Abuse Rehabilitation Center Services Agreement. The idea was, as James, Commissioner King talked about, was that while you can build it, you need to have the services provider also involved in the building process, so that what gets built is something that they can use. And so part of the obligation of the service provider is to work with the contractor to...I got an echo.
Sorry.
No problem. Service provider work with the contractor to put together the, the area for the, for the remodeling and the construction work. So they will work hand in hand. It's my plan to, if this gets approved, to send out the request for proposals, get them posted around that we can get, see how many results we have. I would suggest that we probably give people about a 60-day...
I agree.
Time to return it. So some, I put a January in the, in the draft, really should be February.
I was looking on the calendar, if we'd have them come in February 18 on a Friday, and then our Tuesday meeting, we could open.
All right. I think that would be...
Because I thought the 60 days was needed, because this is just something so new. And I agree that we, it's a good idea to do the two contracts together, but I still want to hire our own inspector on this project. So we can talk about that later, but...
So that's what, that's what you have. You have those two requests for proposal for the Mental Health and Rehabilitation Center out there at the Justice Center.
You want to explain the BOTs? They're so new around here.
Well, it's the same process that we use to construct the jail. It's, it's a build, operate, transfer arrangement where we get ideas from the contractors for the area to be built. You get, you've already adopted an ordinance that says that the Commissioners are interested in doing it before we even build the jail, so that carries over. You get concepts from the contractors as to what sort of things they're going to do. You get a fixed price. It's usually a no-change-order type arrangement, and it's set in stone as to what the price is going to be. We know that the American Rescue Plan has a top amount of 1.5 million. I think I put in the request proposal about a million dollars for the remodel. That's some of the estimates that Commissioner King has received throughout the course of this. And then once it's built to the satisfaction of the Commissioners, they'll operate it for a period of time and then transfer it over to the Commissioners.
I make a motion we approve both these and get them sent out.
With the changes?
With the changes, correct.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Right. There is, it's not on the agenda, but it was submitted to you. It's the Barry Ritter's Contract Extension Exhibit E.
About ready to bring it up.
Yeah. That is for, his contract technically expires, I think, on December 31st. And so...
This monthly is just to help the new staff get...
New staff, and also there was a staffing report that was put forth by the 911 Board to consider. So that will all be necessary to help implement that.
And you know, a lot of people don't realize that he used to run the whole state 911. He's very qualified in his position, so I move we...
He's done a good job for us.
Very good. Very good. I move we adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
King?
Yes. John, do you have anything else?
Mr. Carmichael has his agreement with, for reassessment services that you took under advisement at the last meeting when we got the bid in.
Good.
Good morning. I stated in the bid opening, the contract is a GLGF form contract, so basically all the counties have to use their contract. They just have, the counties go out and they hire who they want to do it. The contract's paid for by use of the reassessment fund, which has already been appropriated based on last year's amount. So we have to do a little bit of adjustment, but the two, comparison between the two contracts over the four-year period was very, very close, like a 4% differential. All I can tell you is the contract that we used is what we used last time, the prior four years. There were 48 monthly updates to the DLGF. They were on time, and the project never fell behind. So I recommend the use of PSC for reassessment services going forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don, do you have anything else, or?
I don't believe I have anything else, no.
We'll go ahead and move to Purdue Extension.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lauren Timmy, Purdue Extension. I just had a few things that I wanted to discuss this morning. Thank you again for all of your help with moving, potentially moving our office. Just, we were doing the math over there, and we have anywhere from seven to 11 employees in our office, including volunteers, and some are helping. So getting a larger space is really important. But just referencing an email from about a week ago, the original intentions and plans to move to the Clerk's Office does not seem like something that is going to be monetarily feasible truly ever. And so we kind of walked the space up here where the old Title IX and probation offices are on the third floor. And we think that the space would be suitable, but we're just looking for kind of your blessing to move forward with that. Yeah. Or if there's any discussion or questions you have.
It's the old 4D Court.
4D, sorry.
At the end of the third floor, be up here with us. And a lot of people don't realize how involved these extension offices are, because they're just always doing different projects. And we appreciate what they do for us, so.
Thank you.
And you've talked to Stevens, Steve?
But yes.
Mr. Foster to help you some. And are you able to go get some financing yourself, or?
Uh, yeah, we're working on it. We just want this approval first before we start seeking those future funds, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You want a motion, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I make a motion we approve the request from Purdue Extension.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Thank you. And as Sherri said, we do a lot of programming. So here is our quarterly report, just to keep you guys updated. It also has a list of our upcoming events, I think, for programming for the next quarter. So you have that in front of you as well now. And then we just wanted to make you aware that due to some vacations and some family emergencies within our office, we're going to have to be closed next week. We will still be monitoring our phones and emails, but unforeseen circumstances, the office will be closed.
When's the 4H sign up?
Open enrollment is now.
And when's your deadline?
Uh, Jane, there's no deadline at this point. Jane, I thought it was...
End of January or?
Yeah. And Alexis didn't have that in there. But she does have an update in there as well.
This is a nice quarterly report.
Thank you. You made it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other Department Heads, elected officials?
Sir, Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. As many of you know, Commissioner Henry is retiring from the Albany Police Department, so I just want to congratulate you on your retirement and your decades of service up there. You leave large shoes to be filled, and it's been an honor working with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
How many years, Shannon?
29.
And then your other hats that you wore up there? Too many?
Yeah, there's a lot.
And he's not going to go anywhere but stay up there.
Nope, still staying there, yep.
Nice community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll be up here a little more now, won't you?
Yeah, I'll be up here a little more. So...
Donna?
I have, I, I just have a few questions about the art plan that I need to ask. Get it down.
Well, first of all, that's a good point. You need to talk about the, approve the retention plan.
Right. Do you have the stuff to go over, John, about?
I, I don't have it. I thought I...I sent it to you guys. I don't have my copy.
The Employee Retention Bonus Program that the Commissioners have put together, we have different steps within it. Under the Public Safety Employees, that we've, we've put in here that amount of a retention bonus can be up to $5,000. And the public safety is defined as merit deputy with Sheriff's Department, Correctional Officer, Emergency Communication Dispatch, Emergency Medical Service, Paramedic, or EMTs. Now, what we've done is all, as full-time public safety employees, employed by after March 25, 2019 to December 31, 2020, the amount of a retention bonus they will receive will be $3,000. Must continue work for one year after bonus is received. Full-time public safety employee, employed on or after January 1, 2021, amount of retention bonus is $2,000. Must continue your work for one year after bonus is received. Full-time non-public safety employee, continuously employed, amount of retention bonus is $3,000, employed on or after January 1, 2021, amount of a retention bonus is $1,000. Employees must remain employed for one year after receipt of the bonus. We also have part-time public safety or non-public safety employees, attorneys for departments or courts, employed amount of retention bonus is $1,000, employed or or after January 1, 2021, amount of retention bonus is zero. Employees must remain employed for one year after the receipt of the bonus. And this will have to be passed by the County Commissioners, and hopefully we can get this done today, so these employees can get these bonuses.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the rural police?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Rigan?
No.
Mr. King?
Absolutely. Jenny, you need your phone back? You got questions, Donna, or we good, or?
Me? No, no, I have questions. Okay. Um, when we did the First Amendment on Friday, it shouldn't not have been the Second Amendment, because it was already amended once on November 1st by resolution, which... because it was already amended once on November 1st by resolution, which, uh, that amendment was to add $2,200,000 for administrative and other expenses, which it's probably not no big deal, but. And then secondly, um, we have a claim from Mr. Brooke, um, to pay for some legal fees, um, we believe is gonna come out of the art plan.
It should come out of administration if it has to do with work.
There's no appropriation for that. There's no appropriation for these bonuses. So somebody's gonna have to go to council in January. And any, anything that was amended on the plan Friday, anything new, all needs to go and have an appropriation by council.
Right, I've talked to council and if we have to, then we can do a meeting and get what needs to be appropriated.
Cause, um, also when you do the, um, appropriation for the bonuses.
Right.
Whatever, we'll also need, um, not only the amount for that, but by per share of pension, which will have to come out of those. So that needs to be appropriated separately. And, yeah, like I said, anything that was amended.
Those are things we can, we can sit down and.
Cause council's keeping everything on a, in its own separate account number, so we can track it better. And then the, on the employees, every employee's gonna have, we're gonna have to go in and add the new, um, account number, whatever, whatever's decided by council. I'm hoping they'll just make one line item, so everybody can be paid out of that one line item, cause we have to go in and create all these new line items for every employee. So it's gonna take a while for our office to get all the paperwork done also, but I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
You know, this, your bill isn't gonna get paid for a while and we need the appropriation for anything new that was added after what council's already appropriated.
Probably just good that the employees knows that, know that they're gonna get a bonus.
Right.
It's, it's coming. But I've, I've talked to the council about what we would have to do with them. Uh, they were in agreement that if they have to call a special meeting, we'll call a special meeting and we'll get this done.
Well, the reason I bring it up is cause Joe called Heather on Friday and wanted nothing could be done for the end of the year.
Yeah.
We have no appropriation for it, so.
We would've loved, we've been working on this for quite some time. We would've loved to have these checks out this week.
I know.
To where they could've got it, but, uh, sometimes stuff just gets in the way.
Yeah.
But, uh.
So, yeah, as long as they're gonna hold a special meeting and we can get it advertised 10 days in advance of that, after the first of the year, so.
But at least they know the check's coming.
Yeah.
That's the main thing.
Just for the record.
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Well, just for the record, there were two projects that were removed from the American Rescue Plan that was approved.
Yeah.
Right.
Yorktown project and the Albany project, which would've freed up about 2.2 million dollars from the appropriation. As I understand, the council appropriated 7.9 million as, as a gross figure, not by project, but as a gross figure.
No, they did it by project.
Paid approved by project?
Yes, because that's how this sheet was turned into council. This sheet was turned into council by the Commissioners, um, by project. And so council gave each, uh, project its own account number, so our office could track it better. So if, they can also, when you do the appropriation, you can also have council by resolution do a reduction of those two that are removed from the plan. So those can be reduced off of here, which would free up more for your appropriations. So, but no, coun- council did do it by project. Each one has their own account number.
Well, however, we gotta do it and get it done. I just want the employees to know that they have something coming. Is there anything else?
No, I just wanna make sure everybody was in agreement.
Everybody got their, uh, weekly, monthly and quarterly reports? We moved the payment of claims in the amount of $36,439,587 and 67 cents. And Donna, I'm sure this is like, uh, payouts and everything else, right?
It's all the December settlement of property taxes.
I just want everybody to know that we're not spending $36 million here.
Keep the units happy.
This happens in, in June and December. You'll see these big amounts after I've done settlement.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Donna, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan? Yes. Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we'll move to, uh, public comments. And if you could, keep them to three minutes or less. John, are you gonna keep time on it?
I will.
You have something?
No, you, you have your sign-up sheet.
Right here.
Okay.
I have Mr. Thomas Richards.
Good morning, Commissioners, and, uh, Merry Christmas to all of you. Um, I'm here on behalf of the solar proposal for, uh, Washington Township, Delaware County.
Yeah.
I'm currently an eighth-generation farmer. Uh, my son's here today. He is ninth generation. I have a grandson that is the 10th generation. Um, you know that our, um, family is, uh, dedicated to farming. It's also.
Sir, excuse me, but I need you to state your name.
Thomas Richards. Denise, I'll even give you this. I get.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Uh, my grandson's a 10th generation. I have a, a son-in-law that is involved in the farming operation also. Uh, I'm here today to say that I'm not against solar. What I am against is taking farm production, uh, out of, uh, being farmed for food production. As you all know, um, as you all go to the grocery store, uh, food prices continue to rise. The more land that you take out of production, the more increase you're gonna see in the grocery store. I wanna, um, and I don't have an agenda in front of me, but, uh, from my understanding is that the Area Planning Commission will set standards. Is that correct? And then the Commissioners will vote on it? Is that correct?
Those, the solar ordinance has already been, uh, put together, approved. Everyone's already approved the solar ordinance.
Okay.
Plant Commission has, the Commissioners have.
It's already been passed?
Yes.
So, okay.
You've done a really good job of keeping it under the radar. Maybe I should, maybe I should, I didn't sign this.
Hold on, hold on.
Pardon?
To keep it, well, you can have your time to get up, to talk.
Okay.
It's this gentleman's time now.
I'm sorry.
So we'll just try to keep it civil.
I reached out to the, uh, Area Planning Commission here. It'd be three weeks ago today. I can't tell you exact date. Marta Moody was on the phone, I guess, with a virtual phone call. I tried to touch base with her. Uh, I left my name and number. She never did return my call. I asked one of the people in there about, w- we thought as landowners that we would be, received a letter notifying what was going on. We never received anything. Uh, one of the workers, staff in there, um, told me that it was on the Delaware.gov website and that it was in the newspaper. And I asked her, I said, "Well, what if you don't take the newspaper?" And, uh, her comment to me was quote-unquote, "That I chose to be ill-informed." I don't choose to be ill-informed. Anyway, we were wondering what we could do in opposition, so that's all I have to say today. But thank you, thank you.
Next is Ryan Richards.
Yeah, my name's Ryan Richards. Um, some things I just didn't, didn't know, thought about. When they start, um, putting, um, driving the pillars for all the solar panels and stuff, we have county ditches that aren't county ditches that are hooked up to other ditches that go into those county ditches. What is it there to protect us from them driving that through a, driving that through that or then backing our water up? Or second of all, what happens if, um, they knife in, um, wiring to go back to the substation to take it in, it cuts a county ditch, cause they're probably, they were not, probably gotta fix those. Then it's gonna back up, it's gonna hurt our, hurt our fields as far as that goes. Um, another thing that we've talked about too is just, it's gonna, we're not gonna be able to buy any ground anymore, because big corp, big corporations are gonna come in and buy up the ground, cause they're just gonna lease it to the solar company, because they got big money to spend. They're gonna come in here and they're gonna start buying up a bunch of ground and then we're not gonna be able to buy anything. Or second of all, our landowners, or people we farm for are gonna come in, "Well, I can get this much money solar, so we're gonna lose farm ground that we're gonna farm." I heard it was like 3,000 acres that they're gonna take up. That's over half a million bushel of corn a year it's gonna take away. Could take away 200,000 bushel of beans a year, just in that one solar farm in Washington Township. It's, it's just like, like Dad said. I coached a.
Go ahead, take your time.
I coached an eighth-grade basketball team at West Hill. I try to teach them to think of others before they think of themselves, in the way I feel. Many, the ones that want the solar, they're not thinking of anybody, any of the neighbors around them. All they're thinking about is the money. I've worked 20 years trying to build my place, get away where I wanted it. And now it's just, they're gonna, it's like, I don't have, what do I have now? Have solar panels all around me, have people, big corporations coming in, buying up ground. I can't go any, can't expand my operation. It's just I'm a loss. I don't have, it's like you said, I, I built that building. It's five, I had to be five feet off. I had to come in, two, two parcels out. I had to contact every landowner, make sure it's all right to build that, to build my pole barn. And like I said, I had, I had, for something as simple as that, and you're talking about building something so monstrosity that could go from 3,000 to 10,000 acres, who knows how big it'll go? And then, then they're where we're, they're, they're where you are, losing all our, we could be done. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Tammy Landis.
My name is Tammy Landis. I live out in Washington Township. Um, I just moved to Delaware County five years ago and, um, I feel like it was the biggest mistake I ever made, because I moved from Tipton County because I have wind towers all around me. And then I come over here and the other day I'm working out my yard and I see people in my, my land. And I went down and I said, "What are you doing here?" "Oh, we're testing for solar panels." And I said, "Not my land you're not. They were in the wrong field." I knew nothing that there was gonna be solar panels all around my house. I got no letters. I got no contact from anybody. I have called the Planning Commission, like Mr. Richards has. Nobody will contact me back. I'm frustrated, because people move to the country so they can have wide-open spaces. My dad farmed. I farmed with him. I'm farming with my husband now. And we just see this, I agree with Mr. Richards. You're taking away food that we can grow by putting solar panels. And I am not against solar panels, but I am against, like in the field behind me, it all runs down into my field. I took a picture the other day when the rain was there. All the rain was running down the rows and landing in my field. So when those solar panels are there and they're leaking stuff that they shouldn't be leaking, it's all gonna run down into my field and it's gonna destroy my crops that I'm trying to grow. And this is frustrating, because when we did the wind towers in Tipton County, I got letters, I got notifications and meetings to go to before it even started. And this, I, I, I agree with what the man said. This has kinda been done under the radar and nobody's been informed. And now we're stuck with living on a property that has solar panels around it, that my property value is gonna go in the toilet and we're not gonna be able to get out of it what we need. And like he said, you can't buy farmland anymore. That's the only thing. You buy farmland, you keep it, because that's what feeds America. And so when people of Delaware County can't go in the grocery store and buy pork or anything made with beans or corn and pay $10 a pound for a pork chop? That, that's, we've gotta work on this. We've gotta feed people. Do you want electricity more than you want food, is what I look at it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. John, do you have anything on the? We'll check here.
Didn't we pass that about two, three years ago, the solar?
Yeah, it was last year.
I was thinking it was two years ago.
Last year or this year?
I believe it was this year.
It was this year.
No, I have nothing on social media.
Sir, do you have something to say back here in the back?
My name's Grant Collins. Uh, I also live in Washington Township. I'm a generational farmer, as the Richards family is. The watershed is a, is a definite, you know, our, our, our open ditches are overloaded anyhow. Everybody does systematic tiling anymore. We've, we've, uh, we've got an issue with getting it to the river and sending it on south. We're putting a 3,000-acre roof to shed water into these overloaded, uh, creeks that we have. There's a very fragile ecosystem right in the middle of this project. We call it the prairie, um, out in our area. It's off of County Road 600. Thousands of years, um, well, you know, I just am concerned with the, the, uh, impact it'll have on our beloved prairie, you know? We're, uh, we're neighbors, we're friends, we're, uh, we're family. And, uh, and we were kind of, uh, oh, we're not taken advantage of, but we, we were not informed. And, uh, you know, how, stamps are higher than they used to be, but they're not that much higher, you know? We can, a letter certainly would've helped and, and, and put, uh, there'd probably be a lot more people in the room. So, um, that's, you know, the concerns are, you know, the watershed, the prairie is a big concern. Uh, I would think that somebody would wanna look into the impact on the ecosystem in the prairie, so.
Shannon, could you have, have they got their phone numbers and stuff? Could you have Marta reach back out to them?
Sure. Thank you.
I'll have Commissioner Henry reach out to Marta Moody to contact you guys, so at least you get something from the Planning Commission, okay?
Shannon, that does bring up the drainage board, cause, um, those tiles. We've, we've had our, um, you know, when they put in a new road, they forgot to tell us that they broke about, um, you know, five or six drains. And so it would be nice if the Tommy.
There is, there is, uh, drainage, um, information in that ordinance as well.
They'll be liable?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, could I say?
Got about three minutes.
Okay.
I'm David Mauch from Neighbors of all these people. And like, we, we haven't had much time to research either. Just like everybody said, like I said, it's been under the radar. Just like everybody said, like I said, it's been under the radar. We... Nobody got any letters or anything on the specifics and stuff like that on it. So I've been doing some research this past week and getting ready to come to this meeting today. And I come across, you're all familiar, Joe Russell. I think it was back in June, you had a meeting, and, well, they was... he was talking about 100 foot from the property line, and you asked Joe his thoughts, and he thought 50 feet would be fine. Am I right? He thought 50 feet be fine, okay. Then the next sentence he said, he said, now, and I don't have the minutes, I could go back and find them probably, but he said that we need... He said, "You need to rush this through." Now, what did he mean by saying rush this through? Did anybody see that I'm talking about? What did that mean? Did that mean, "Let's rush this through before opposition can get a hold of it"? You know what I'm saying?
Was it the commissioners' meeting or was it another meeting?
I couldn't... I don't know. I'm not for sure if it was a commissioner meeting or if it was a...
I can't remember.
Okay. The one reason, you know, like Mr. Buck out brought up, I think is like 80 million... this is going to be an $80 million project. Maybe that's one reason it's been under the radar, nobody's been told about it.
I'm not sure why everybody thinks that no one was told. We had probably 50 or 60 people at the planning commission meeting that come in that night, so those people found out.
Okay, just like Mr. Collins said, stamps are more expensive than they used to be. Wouldn't you think that something this big, everybody would be told, send a letter telling about it? I mean, that's... What is your honest opinion? Do you think it should have been everybody notified, or you think it should have been kept quiet?
That's a Marta Moody question because I thought they had to be notified.
I mean, with the towers, they had to notify us that there was going to be a tower within so many feet or miles of your house. And I mean, they sent us a list of all the letters. So we never got a letter, and I didn't even realize. I mean, I heard other people talking they were going to have solar panels around their house. And then when I find out, wow, you know, that... It's perception. That's the word. It's perception. And when I look at it, you're flying under the radar. I read the same thing he did. We got to rush this through, and I'm thinking, wow, the perception of this is not...
We worked on this. We worked on this for a long time. There was nothing rushed through by no means.
And I was never at a meeting where I've... I don't even believe Joe Russell caught up and spoke in a committee meeting.
Okay, I got it at my house, so I can... I could bring it. I'll bring it January 3rd, the information.
I'm rushing, too. I have no...
Okay. Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll take a motion and recess.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Donna, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Going to recess.
Brad.